for our computer thing, so just a few minutes. Let me turn my mic on. Here we go. Thank you, Ben. This meeting conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403B 2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may submit comments via the Sanford City website at www.sanfordmain.org under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you all join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am going to combine the mayor's report, and I think, Maura, you had something you wanted to say, and the moment of silence. And the reason will become very obvious. I wanted to talk about Harlan Eastman, who died at his home on February 29th at the age of 94. He was a major contributor to the life of his beloved village of Springvale. He was president of the Sanford-Springvale Historical Society and a driving force behind establishing the historical museum. He also served on the Springvale Public Library Board of Directors since 1979. He will be greatly missed, and I don't know if any of you ever purchased his books about the history of the Sanford-Springvale area, but they were beautifully done books. And so I actually have both of those, so I appreciated his doing that. Maura, did you have some comments?
Not regarding Harlan, but I would make a brief comment that the effort that gentleman made to preserve the history of Sanford-Springvale was extraordinary, and I think we should all be very grateful that he's done the work he has because we have a great historical society and a great museum, and it's all due to his very strong efforts. On another note, we've been getting, I don't know if you guys have been getting the emails regarding Sand Pond and the request for a retroactive moratorium. I have been in contact with one of the people who I know from high school regarding that. I think they were hoping that we would just do a random moratorium this evening. I let them know that that's not quite how it works, but given their letters, and I gave some information to Jamie about possible, if we were to discuss it, possible ordinances we could look at, and he's also been working with the developer. So it really wasn't quite appropriate yet, but we will be discussing it at the zoning board subcommittee. And because it's been all these letters, I wanted to mention it early in the meeting. Everybody knew that it wasn't something that was by the wayside. It's their continued community effort to protect their pond. So, thank you.
So, now, back to the agenda. This is why I wanted to introduce Mr. Eastman, was because a moment of silence I'd like to dedicate to him. So if you'd join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. There's that. And now we'll go to roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley, Council Stackpole, Council Hanselman, Council Martell, Council Trenchmontane, Council Hitchcock.
Present.
And I am Mayor Brink, also present. Our city manager, Steve Buck, and executive administrator, Larissa Rickens. And let's move on to the minutes, in order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on February 20th, 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Ann?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Can I have a second? Pete?
I'll second it for you.
I knew he wasn't paying attention. That's why I called on him.
Was paying attention. I figured somebody else was going to second it.
All those in favor? Thank you. And the reason why Nate isn't voting, he wasn't here.
Yes, I wasn't here either.
Oh, you weren't here either?
Twenty-seventh, right?
Yes, that's true. No, 20, 20, you weren't here either. Yeah, is that right?
I'll abstain. Anything on the 27th, I'll abstain from.
No, it was 20th.
20th.
You were here for that.
I was here. So, there's my vote.
There we go. We got it now. Okay, you can tell that that long meeting we had beforehand just wiped us out. All right. So, we don't have any, didn't have any subcommittees this past week, so we're going to move right on to the city manager's report, and I don't know if you can do a homeless update with that, too. Thank you.
Before it's time I report tonight, if I could also recognize somebody that passed today, Senator Susan Collins' mother passed away around noon time today. So, she was 96. She was one of those transformative people that I was blessed to know and meet and worked with her. She was a chair of two different charter commissions that obviously administered there in Caribou. If you want to know where the senator gets her leadership qualities from, you had to meet her mom, right? She was a, she was a hard-driving woman. She was also the city's first elected female mayor there in Caribou. So, she wrote a very extraordinary life, so my blessings go out to Mrs. Collins.
Well, thank you for bringing her up. And the fact that she was a mayor, I didn't know that.
Yeah, the first female mayor.
Well, you know, great people came from Caribou, by the way. For those of us who are from the county. All right, go ahead, Steve.
All right. Under the manager's report, let me pull that up here so we can put that on screen. Just going to give you some recap, very quick recaps on legislation that we continue to watch. The legislature is supposed to be winding down, closing out for April 17th. There's a lot of, a huge flurry of activity there. I did note for the supplemental budget, there's the establishment of an injury and violence prevention program by the Maine CDC. The governor's bill creates that program at the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention as a central hub to bring together data and violence-related injuries and deaths that's currently kept separate. So there's a million dollars in there. This is important for us as we continue to experience mental health crises, crises in our community, to have further outreach and support. There's also an act funding in there to strengthen Maine's mental health system in the governor's bill towards establishing statewide crisis-receiving centers. So the funding that's in the bill really focuses on the Lewiston area and establishing those there, but again, it should trickle down to our area as well. I know Sweetsur has additional funding coming to them now, and they've been able to provide walk-in services as well. There's also support for mobile crisis teams in the amount of $2.8 million to strengthen those teams as they move around our state in support to various crises, and that could be very beneficial for us as well. On the public safety side, I just spoke with Council Trenchmontane about this. So LD 1515 is an act to fund emergency medical services. This seeks to increase our current Medicaid, which is MaineCare, to the Medicare rates, which would be a significant increase for us for a city. It would reduce our contractual allowances, and we could better plan for additional funding moving forward for ambulance service. There's also LD 1751. That's a separate bill. It also seeks to address, to maximize the state's reimbursement under the federal program under, from CMS for Medicare. So we'll be reporting out our true costs of providing ambulatory services to the state of Maine, and they will work towards obtaining additional federal funding using that information. The most significant piece in this particular bill for us is it establishes certain other charges that are not in our charge master currently, one of which is for community paramedicine. So it provides for that reimbursement on a per-call basis. Our Safe Streets for All, city council had a combined meeting with the planning board here last week. Time's a blur this time of year. Yep, last week. So we talked about our Safe Streets for All. They had their last, last week, they had their last hearing at the high school, so they're done with their hearing processes. The consultant will now work towards presenting you with a draft plan. We have slowed the pace a little bit because originally we thought we were going to put in for the construction application for the spring. We've now learned that after the last round of applications they took for constructions loans, that there's a billion dollars that comes out this year for the spring's application. Last round of applications, they had $60 billion of applications, so they've increased the threshold so high that we don't even qualify on the construction side. So they raised it to seven, the threshold for 17 fatalities per 100,000. A population of 22,000 people here, so that's four fatalities for the location, highest of which we've had two. So we're at a 50% level for meeting the threshold for the construction. We'll pause on that. Quickly shifted, and I sent communications to Matt Hill, our director, as well as Patrick Adams at the Federal Highway Authority and our consultant, VHB, about focusing on the technology demonstration grants for which our city is ripe for, the first of which could be, you know, mid-block sensors and such. So MDOT through the build grant that we've been working with them on, they're going to start the replacement of all traffic lights for the entire city starting this year. Those will be connected using SanfordNet fiber. When we put the LED streetlights in, those were fitted out with seven-pin connectors in anticipation for putting road sensors and other elements in there. So we would anticipate that would be one of the first elements that we'd go for. MDOT is not going to install those mid-block sensors, but we could do that under a demonstration program, which would be very significant.
Which, Steve, that means if I am a good citizen, I'm going the speed limit, and I start in Springvale, and I hit a green light, I would hit all the green lights all the way down through?
Well, that would be a matter of timing. The mid-block sensors, so take, for example, I know you're, I know you're making fun of me because I keep, but the mid-block sensors, where those would come in. So think about the scenario of, let's see, oh, the traffic light. Yeah, the traffic light at Old Mill. From there to the intersection out front here, there's no traffic lights in between. So if the lights are looking at the number of units of cars and where they're at, at those two lights, there's so many cars that are going to be turning off between those two lights, so many cars coming in and such under that. So unless you're sensing the traffic counts in between and where they're coming from, the lights can't respond to that. So this would, this would be a high-technology way to increase the mobility for our limited space in our corridors by addressing the incoming and outgoing flow mid-block as it pertains to our traffic lights.
So there'd be no traffic jams? That would help to prevent?
It would be there to reduce that.
Jonathan, it's your dream come true. He's made comments before.
No traffic? Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. So that will be our focus moving forward on that. I also note in here that the Director Hill has put forward yet another planning partnership initiative. He's put that to the Maine Department of Transportation for South Sanford. So the first PPI, which turned into the Village Partnership Initiative, the VPI here, that raised $25 million for the RACE grant for us, of federal funds. This is a smaller PPI, but Matt has propagated that same methodology forward to the Maine Department of Transportation. This will be for South Sanford around the Roundabout area. We have significant pedestrian impediments there, those connecting sections of Route 4, as well as connecting sections of Route 109. Maine Department of Transportation has notified us that they've accepted the PPI, and they're putting it in for an announcement for late April, early to, early to late April. So we'll see that coming forward. We'll start the process there. There, there'll be a lot of planning work around that, not different than what we did here in our downtown, and then we'd be able to apply for future funds in the various areas towards making those improvements. So we already know we have designed desires to have the pedestrian mobility built into the Roundabout that's down there now. It comes at a significant cost. This would allow us to apply for leveraged funding to get that accomplished, not just at city expense. The next element is general assistance. We're tracking LD 1664, hoping that our state reimbursement goes from 70% to 90%. Representative Mistrakio believes that we, likely the state legislature will settle at 80. Even a 10% increase would be very welcome. Our K24, Maine Municipal Association lead lobbyist, still believes that the 90% is going to be obtained because the $8 million of additional state funding is in the budget currently, is being carried, and therefore there's not really a reason for them to not support that. So the reason why it's so important for us, so pre-2019, we budgeted approximately $150,000 of gross expenditures for our general assistance. So the administrators in the department would typically pay out about $150,000 per year, would be a high year for us with a 70% reimbursement at the state level. During COVID, because of the emergency housing, that started to climb and get up to $300,000, and in this last fiscal year, it went to $967,000. And in this year, unless things mitigate, we could go between 1 to $1.3 million. So it's a significant impact to our community, so we continue to advocate for positive developments there. Let's see, last week, we hosted the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development. They came to us here on February 28th, and when I say they came to us, they came here with nine people, to include the commissioner. Commissioner Heather Johnson came here with staff from the Office of Community Development, Business Development, Maine Technology Institute, Maine International Trade Center, Office of Tourism, and Office of Outdoor Recreation. And we have tapped into every one of those departments for city initiatives here. We work with them on a fairly regular basis. Originally, we thought the commissioner was coming here to study what else DECD could do in the impacted area of the RACE grant because Matt Hill schmoozes with everybody. He made a connection with her at an MDOT conference.
And they knew him. They all knew him, too.
Oh, yes. Yes, he's a good schmoozer. So he politely invited her here, and we originally thought that they were going to zoom in here, but they landed here with nine people. So the mayor and deputy mayor were here with us that day. We engaged their staff. We had a long list of asks at the end. We amended our presentation, but we let them know what's going on. Sanford is doing extremely unique things here from the fiber projects and the solar. Our use of tax-accommit financing towards a continuum of housing is second to none. We had the first housing TIF as well, so we, and we impressed upon them our utilization of CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, we have to compete for competitively. Maine International Trade, we have a foreign trade zone that's set up here. It's the only one in York County. And we have worked extensively with the Maine Technology Initiative around workforce development, and I'll talk to you about that further on Friday.
Did Aaron help make that presentation?
So we threw all of the information to Aaron. Aaron put it together, flew away to Portugal, right, left us on our own, but we appreciate the presentation very much. It was very well done, so.
And Steve did a very good job presenting. You would have been proud.
He didn't have the same, like, personality you would have had, but he did all right.
Wasn't any spreadsheets in it, though, Erin. The next item, the council's been made aware of this. So Breeze Line, formerly Metrocast, formerly Atlantic Broadband, and before that Metrocast, is one of our cable TV franchise entities here in the community. They have sent us the formal notice that within 36 months, they desire to re-initiate their franchise agreement, citing all of the federal FCC regulations and such under that. So pat them on the back, good job. So, we have had extensive number of concerns expressed over the years of their, when they took over Metrocast, those concerns were there. Atlantic Broadband said, we brought them out. This is who we are. We'll improve the services. Still continue to get concerns being raised. They became Breeze Line, renamed, rebranded, still have concerns raised on a pretty much a weekly basis. And when Jordan Wilson, our communications coordinator, is monitoring online traffic and such like that, there's never a pause in concerns being raised about Breeze Line. So we used our legal counsel, and we sent them formal notification that pursuant to the FCC regs that we proudly listed off, that we will invoke the formal process to have a public hearing to allow our residents to come in and express their concerns prior to their further consideration of franchise negotiations. So we're set that up for April 30th at 6:00 PM. I get concurrence from Breeze Line that their staff could attend that. We've set that, setting that up as a live in-person meeting here for people to come. It'll be hybrid as we do everything, so people can zoom in. Jordan Wilson is starting the communications around that and propagating that out for public notice. We'll do multiple notices in the newspaper, which goes to print next week, in Sanford-Springvale News. We'll also be pushing that out on social media. People will be able to submit to us in writing. We'll compile their letters. They can submit to us by email platform on Sanford Connects. They'll be able to give us verbal indication to become a part of the recorded record there that evening. And from there, we will work with Breeze Line to hopefully address some of these concerns that our residents have. The next, I think, is the last. This is a large announcement. So we had the good pleasure. Matt Nelson and I were there on behalf of the city. On March 1st, last Friday, we attended the inaugural meeting of the Maine Defense Industry Alliance that was held at the York County Community College campus here in Sanford. Yes, we have a York County Community College here in Sanford. Many, many people aren't even aware of that. It's on 60 Community Drive in the backside of our industrial park. The meeting focused on the workforce needs of the multitude of defense industries in the near future, and was represented there by that day by Pratt &amp; Whitney, Bath Ironworks, General Dynamics, and Portsmouth Naval Shipyard. Senator Collins, Senator King, Representative Pingree, and Governor Mills. Senator Collins couldn't make it live. She was feeling under the weather, didn't fly out that night, so she came in to us by video presentation. Senator King was there. That man can tell a story better than anybody. Quotes right off the top of his head. Representative Pingree presented there very well, as also as did Governor Mills. They all represented, were there representing for the announcement of the Workforce Development Initiative with York County Community College at the Sanford location. So Senator Collins made the announcement that the Navy has committed $5 million in submarine industrial base funding towards the initiative. The first portion of that, $3.5 million, is going towards building, a new building there, separate from the one they currently have. And the plans were brought around the room to show. I apologize, I meant to take pictures of those, but the excitement elevated as protesters infiltrated the room and outside protesting, you know, the bombing of, of Israel's bombing Palestine and such under that. So after we dismissed that, that bit of disruption, they also made us aware that there's another $1.5 million of congressional discretionary spending that was dedicated towards a project and further an additional $1 million that was awarded pending through the Senate's fiscal year appropriations that's on the table before them currently. So $6 million is coming in here to Sanford specifically to bolster. They need 200 students a year to go through that particular program for high-technology welding, pipe fitting, electrical, and other needs specific to both Pratt &amp; Whitney and the fit-out of ships and submarines. They documented that the Navy needed an additional 150,000 additional workers in the United States over the next decade. Portsmouth Naval Shipyard is doubling its capacity, expanding from three dry docks to five by 2028, and they need to employ an additional 6,500, they employ 6,500 people, but they needed additional 1,200 more by that 2028 date. Governor Mills stated that there are 7,500 new employees that are needed in the immediate future, just between Pratt &amp; Whitney, Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, and Bath Ironworks alone. So given the increased workforce and economic impact, it was stated that we are making our state stronger and our country safer. I can't remember if I credit that to Senator King or Governor Mills. I'm taking notes on my phone. My thumbs aren't that quick, so I couldn't remember who. But it was a very positive day for us, you know, $6 million coming in for direct workforce development here at the Sanford campus. So now we could have housing, housing, and housing.
That's what I was whispering to Ann.
There's also, so I talked with MTI there, and talked with a couple of the defense contractors. They're also looking at Sanford for significant expansions down here for ancillary services for the defense industry. We have some of the last of the developable space here in York County that has quick access to water, sewer, fiber, and other assets, so.
And I actually pictured the airport being a part of all of this, needing those planes to fly their stuff in and out, so.
Yeah, they'll leave the runway lights and drive my electricity out, but that's okay. That's, that's, that's what I have for the manager's report. For the homeless task force, we had an exceptionally strong meeting this past Monday, so I'm just going to hit on the highlights. Again, we have more and more people coming to the table. We're joined by the police department, mental health unit, city administrators. Maine 211 joined us for the first time. Southern Maine Healthcare was represented there, Main Access Points, Carrying Unlimited, United Way of Southern Maine, York County Transportation, York County Community Action, the Sanford Housing Authority, and the York County Shelter Program. Mayor Brink was there, along with Deputy Chief Small, Sergeant Colleen Adams, and our communication director, Jordan Wilson. On the advocacy side, we continue to track LD 2136. That seeks to put $12 million of additional funds into the homeless shelters throughout the state, which, many of which have said, absent this funding that's being proposed here, that they are closing their doors. And there's another $2 million to, for funding targeted for low-barrier shelters. They also indicated, as part of the amendment to this LD 2136, the state has put out to the statewide homeless council to submit a tenure plan to the state, and of course, attached to that, their funding needs. So that was a positive development as well. We talked about emergency housing relief. The governor's supplemental budget includes $16 million in there for emergency housing relief. I won't go into all of the details where that can be utilized, but the concern was, the concern continues to be that they may fund 2136 or, or only the governor's portion, but both levels of funding are needed, which would be $28 million of additional funding coming in for support. This $16 million could be used for rent support as well, not just, just. rent support as well, not just, just low-barrier and high-barrier shelters. We also discussed the statewide general assistance situation, the burden upon our, our system, and the hope that the state takes that to the ninety percent level. I did note that, that's an eight million dollar fiscal impact to go from seventy to ninety, that's on top of the additional five million the state just allocated to put in to cover the current level of commitment at the seventy percent for, for municipal reimbursement. Lafayette Warming Shelter, they currently have forty-four overnight, there are zero-gravity chairs, sorry for the misspelling there, those have been full and at capacity almost since the day they opened, and there's additional thirty-five plus people per day that visit there only for meals, so there's been a significant level of service, services being offered there. The Warming Center has served as a primary point of contact for entry, for case management and referrals. The shelter is going to close the warming facilities on May first, they'll continue to offer meals there, they're just now, there's a secondary piece to that, the peer support center, which is supposed to be on the upper floor of Lafayette, they're just now getting to interviewing the director and the other coordinator that will be there, but that peer support will be there year-round, for as long as the lease is, is still holding, and we don't know about the funding level and the, and if the, the warming center is going to be reopened yet, we'll find that out as the state passes the funding pieces for us. Coordinated entry and case management continues to be my largest concern, they, they reported out that York County Community Action, Sanford Housing Authority, and York County Shelter Program, they have been coordinating amongst themselves, they all have housing navigators, housing resources, housing vouchers, and for, and, and other funds for medical and other resource connections, their coordinated assessments and creating housing stability plans per persons are ongoing, those are starting to pay dividends, I'll, I'll report, I'll, yeah, so Sanford Housing Authority has now placed seventy-eight unhoused people in the past twelve months, so those were people that were on the streets. In the last thirty days, Carrying Unlimited, one of our partners, has placed six persons to stable housing, and Sanford Housing Authority has placed seven in that same time period, so thirteen people came off the street, and two people have taken services at the York County Shelter Program, which provides them with a rapid entry into housing vouchers as well. So the coordinated entry and case management is going better at this point in time. The York County Shelter Program also indicated that they have communications ongoing with the governor's office for the allocation of resources for additional staff and a van to continue their outward, outreach program remotely, locations where the people are most comfortable in receiving those services, so they, they said they had had that program in the past, it was called Operation Sundown, they're hoping to reinstate that program with the advent of some additional state money coming through Maine State Housing. We discussed the number of outdoor encampments, those were reviewed and deemed that there just shouldn't be, that they, we need to have a stable housing plan for each individual that is out there, the coordinated entry point, case management and entry point, they're, they're sweeping through the encampments this week to start that process of getting individual housing plans for long-term stable housing for the individuals, because they know that there's forty-four people at the Warming Center that need someplace to go starting May first, and we know the encampment down at Heritage Drive needs to be addressed, and they need to have a stable housing plan. The providers also talked to us about, you know, myself and others probably don't think about what a stress point springtime is, they indicated that for people that have depression and seasonal depression, that the advent of the longer days and more sunshine and vitamin D coming into the system becomes a highly stressful situation for them, the, you know, seasonal defective disorder really kicks in more so in the spring than it does in the fall, so they're anticipating responding in those situations as well. And then we also discussed the mental health intake sites as being part of the governor's supplemental budget, and the increased capacity there would be significantly beneficial for us, as it's been very difficult from a capacity perspective to get people to mental health services in a timely manner, when they're willing and able to take the services.
And I never thought about the sun being an issue, you would think it would cheer you up.
Right, it'd be the other way around.
Just the opposite, because they start to feel better and they stop taking their meds, because the sun is out and they're feeling good, so then it becomes a mental health issue, so that didn't even dawn on me that that could possibly be a process.
Then the last new point I have is Mickey Williams joined us from the Maine Two-on-One as, as the coordinator, she talked to the task force about how Two-on-One can aid in the response and getting people to the right levels of services and such under that. Two-on-One takes about seventy thousand calls statewide per year, seven thousand of which originate, ten percent originate just here in York County, the predominance of those calls for heating assistance and housing. So we strengthened the relationship with Two-on-One, such that Region One Hub is going to report back out to them, I think of it like dispatch, give them a run card for those individuals, the best point of contact, who our coordinated case, coordinated entry point and case management is, so we can get, give the people the best information as possible. Again, placements, thirteen people were taken off the street between Carrying Unlimited and Sanford Housing, and again Sanford Housing has done eighty-five in conjunction with those for the year. And then we talked, the last thing, we talked about, so Sanford Housing Authority has sixty dedicated project-based vouchers available for persons currently in need that are unhoused, so when one, when somebody takes one of those vouchers up, and then they get placed into project-based housing from the Housing Authority, then that, that voucher becomes freed up again, so it's, it's on an ongoing basis. They also have received five additional dedicated H C Bs for people in need, and again, they had just struck a partnership with York County Shelter Program to do the inspections for the housing vouchers that they are awarded, because they're, they were finding that they couldn't get the inspections done timely as far as housing quality assurance inspections are concerned, and that by the Sanford Housing Authority doing those same day, they had a greater propensity for success in getting the person housed in a timely manner. So, really starting to see the benefits of, of that team of people coming together on a bi-weekly basis and discussing and coordinating their efforts, and people not working in silo, silo. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve, for your report. Alright, so we're going to move on to communications and presentations, and I'm going to introduce you to Sanford Public Works Director, Matt Hill.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the comment about schmoozing, I.
You're very good at it.
I'm, I'm very happy to, to do my job and, and responsibly advocating for the city of Sanford, with Maine DOT or Maine D E C D is, is a serious part of my job, I take that very seriously, I'm very lucky to be able to do that for Sanford, I'm also very lucky to, to work with other people who take their jobs very seriously as well, so tonight, we're fortunate to have many members of the Highway Division of the Department of Public Works here, like, like everybody in the Highway Division, to, to stand up and just be recognized those who are taking care of our hundred and eighty-four miles of roads, and, and you're going to be surprised that. This, this is the majority of those actually, that are actually doing that job, so, we're here tonight to recognize specifically one of those members, and, and in order to help me kind of make this presentation, I'd like to invite Peter Smith, the deputy director up, Scott Robitelli, our working foreman, and Ray Davis, our senior on-call supervisor. So, these, these are the guys, these are the boots on the ground, and they, they make the show happen every time there's a, an emergency event, you know, these, these three guys are amongst those that are, are making those hard decisions and, and keeping people safe out here.
Did you even warn them that they were going to have to come up?
No, I did not.
Because they looked what?
I trust you could see that on their expressions behind my back there.
I know Ray's not happy right now.
At this time, I'd like to ask Cal Bond and his family to also come up as well. I, well, I guess you usually do with family.
Absolutely, I always bring the family up.
So, so as you know, the job of a snowplow operator is, is difficult, it requires dedication and commitment, nights, weekends, holidays, three call-ins on Christmas Eve, you know, it's difficult, so, tonight, you know, we're doing a presentation here to publicly recognize the actions taken by Cal Bond, an equipment operator one on the evening of January fourteenth of twenty twenty-four, when responding to an emergency call where the mountainous portions of Route two oh two, which incidentally is outside of our responsibility, was encased in ice with numerous vehicles, including large trucks trapped on and off the road, and our partner agencies unable to respond, Cal Bond responded in City Vehicle oh nine ninety-one, also known as the Beast, and threaded his way up and down the mountainside. He used his driving skill, operational experience, and sheer gumption to rescue motorists, prevent further accidents, prevent further property damage, and potentially save lives, going well above and beyond the call of duty. The fact that the situation did not turn into something much more serious was, and no part, no small part, thanks to Cal Bond, his preparedness and actions even surpassed the strong work ethic and positive attitude that he brings to the Department of Public Works Highway Division on a daily basis. The Department of Public Works, the City of Sanford, wish to recognize and thank Cal for these actions, as well as the dedication and service that he has provided to our community. For his exemplary performance in the line of duty, this commendation is awarded to Cal Bond by the City of Sanford, Maine.
And can we have the family all over here, so more can take a picture?
Who's that?
No, 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 no.
Oh, that's you, Ray.
Ray, Ray.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Matt, to clarify, is Cal the Beast, or is the vehicle the Beast?
I, I, I think that was both.
A fun little aside on that, when I, when I first found out this happened, the Beast is our, our all-wheel-drive vehicle, come to find out later, the all-wheel-drive portion had broken, he did it without the all-wheel drive.
So this was on two oh two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want you all in the know, I was coming home from the Lebanon side, it was, it was a long day, and we were coming down past Mount Hope, and I saw the backup of traffic, and I'm like, hell no, I bet something, it was so icy all the way from Lebanon, I actually turned around and I went on Lebanon A, and then I heard about this later, and I was like, oh, thank God I turned around, because it just sounded horrible. So I remember this night, it was horrible, the road was abs, the worst I'd ever seen, so, thank you for doing what you did.
Alright, thank you, guys, and it's safe to leave now, you don't have to hang around, it's okay, thank you for staying as long as you did. Alright, and now we're going to move on to public participation, I think we have some people on the list down there? Oh, Steph, Stephanie Jopling, come on down.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm going on a little over and over.
Well, you have to come down to the mic.
But, but for the public, she said it didn't have, it wasn't supposed to be having a gender race.
This is a, this is a different meeting.
Um, it's okay. And I don't want to say you were.
That would be great.
Because. You'll do fine.
My phone died, so everything I had written on there is, is no longer accessible, so, but the good news is, you guys covered half of what I was going to bring up anyway, so. My name is Stephanie Jopling, I'm a Sanford alum, I went, moved away to go to college, came back to raise my family, I'm here because I have a child in the alternative learning program at Sanford High School, and, sorry.
You're doing a great job.
Um, this is, the anxiety and depression is, is genetic.
Anne's the only scary one. She's friendly.
No, I think he could be, too.
Focus on me.
Okay, so, a few, so, again, so, they, my, a few words on my child, before, they, they've been in and out of crisis, they had two attempts, worst nightmare. But, up until they joined Alt, which happened literally a year prior to when we found out about the possibility, because, make no mistake, Alt is, is definitely going to be like, likely to be cut with the numbers that were sent back, that is, that was already pretty much guaranteed to us, that they put it back onto the budget, which we appreciate for all of our efforts, but we know that it's probably still likely to get cut. The, but up until, so their last day at Crisis was a year ago, the week we found out, and then when they came back from Crisis, they joined Alt, and that was the last time they had to go to Crisis, we've had our bumps, their attendance has been astronomically improved. Last year, I was there at least once a week to take them home early when they made it to school, this year, it was once the entire year until this, their mental health has taken a really hard hit, I've had to pick them up three times, that's why they're not here with me today, because I had to pick them up early from school today, too, because they couldn't make it through. But, they spoke last week in front of the school committee, and I was so proud of them, and they would never have been able to do that before Alt, I credit them entirely for that growth, but I'm supposed to be talking about certain things, so the, the, one of the big reasons why Alt is on the block is because of those ESER positions that they want to roll over into the local budget. This program has been around just with the person running it now for twenty-six years, it's been around much longer than that, too. Matt Nelson mentioned that high school kids get reimbursed for the subsidy way more than the other kids. Karen Webb, at the very first meeting that they brought up this cut, made the estimate that half of these kids would not finish school without this program, and I believe it, because my kid is not going to, and I know, not only that, so I know several kids that aren't going to make it through to graduation without this program, and I know some parents who are even talking about moving, justifying their child a better situation if this program is cut. So that's lots of funds, that's a lot of loss of funds that the state's getting reimbursed, and I know there's a lot of students, but the point of equity is, everybody gets the box that they need, some of them don't need as many boxes to get where they need, the special ed wing below, they need way more supports than the kids with I E Ps out in the main building, it's the same kind of thing, they just don't get the backing of the federal laws to protect them, they're not the ones that can't come to the school legally, so they don't get bridge, they're, they don't have, most of them don't have I E Ps that require, they could, because we're all just finding out now that emotional disturbance is covered under I E Ps, we've never been told that before, but, and I'm sorry, completely lost track.
You're doing a great job.
Um, I know you guys don't make the decisions, I know you're just, your job is to give the numbers, but I just wanted you to be aware of the history of these funds, the moving goalposts with these ESER positions where, I mean, I didn't even know until you had mentioned that two of them had already been rolled into the local budget.
Thank you.
And if we're going to cut, at least try to be creative and maybe not do a total cut, and, I have to go, because I was supposed to be at work at seven.
Thank you, thank you for waiting around.
Nope.
Okay, there's that. Alright, moving right along, and in case people are wondering, we don't usually comment to the public comments, so that's why we're not making comments. Let's see, we are now in the public hearings, so the council will take public comments on the following, and so what I'm going to do is I'm going to hereby open a meeting, and so a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Gyro Farms LLC for a marijuana manufacturing tier-one license at seventy-two Emery Street, Unit two twelve, Sanford, Maine, and do we have anybody speaking in favor? Anyone against? Seeing as that, I declare this meeting closed. Seeing as that, I declare this meeting closed. No, just that, just that, I mean, just the hearing, excuse me, the hearing closed. Okay, don't get excited, guys, come on.
That's me, open door, open door.
She did. All right, the next hearing, I'm gonna open this hearing, and I know this sounds very boring, but I have to always open them and close them, and yeah, so the whole thing goes on. So, I do hate it. A public hearing on proposed amendments to two eighty dash fifteen dash eleven of the Sanford City Ordinance pertaining to design district overlay zones, and I am assuming, Erin, you are speaking in favor?
I am, thank you.
All right.
So this is a topic that has come up several times in both the Design Review Committee meetings and in Planning Board meetings and just amongst staff. The Design Review Ordinance, which is called Design Standards, is two eighty fifteen eleven, is extremely difficult to follow, just based on the formatting of the ordinance. I believe it's something that's been probably added on to over the years many, many times, and so, one of the larger changes that I'm proposing in this rewrite is to reformat the ordinance, and so that it reads, the first section is anything that is applicable to both districts, both the Sanford Downtown District and the Springvale Village District, and then it moves on to separate those two districts and talk about the different items of regulation for each district, whereas the current ordinance is organized based on topic and not on district, if that makes sense. So it currently says something about site planning, and then it talks about the Downtown District, and then it talks about Springville, and then it goes to, say, lighting, and it talks about Downtown District, and it talks about Springville, and it continues on the list, and it is difficult to keep track of which district you're looking at. So, I haven't changed the bulk of the ordinance in that reformat, it's just kind of separating it out, so that it is easier for both the applicants, staff, and the committee to follow. So that's the first item, and the second item is that there are some minor changes proposed up at the top of the ordinance there, to allow staff to review and approve minor modifications to the color, font, logo, size, shape, number, or location of existing or previously approved signage. So many of the applications that come to the Design Review Committee are simply business signage. The Code Enforcement Department already approves signage of all different kinds, and so they're very well capable of approving them within the Design Review District as well. Design Review Committee only meets once a month, and so sometimes a business owner is looking to open a business and not wait a month to put their sign up, and so this is meant to be a business-friendly proposition. The Design Review Committee did sign off on that, and as did the Planning Board. So that's where we're at with that ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone to speak against? Okay, seeing as there are none, I declare this hearing closed. Now for the next one. A public hearing to receive comments on changes to the city ordinance, Chapter seventy, Airport Article Two Rules of Regulation, so this hearing is open, is anybody to speak in favor? Allison?
Good evening, I'm Allison Avia, I'm the Airport Manager of our Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. This is our second public hearing, it's not a new thing, it's the same one as last week, except I accidentally thought I had to have two public hearings, so this is an extra one, so we have two readings and two public hearings, so plenty of public availability for comment on this one. Nothing has changed, I did not receive any, any public comments, so, same presentation as last week, just two weeks later.
Thank you. Is there anybody to speak against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. I'm going to open another public hearing to an ordinance establish standards for abatement of blighted buildings as a category of vacant buildings pursuant to City Codes, Chapter one forty-nine, License Updating, and definition for abandonment, establish a fee for security of dangerous buildings, and other administrative amendments for Article six.
Okay. I'm Ian Houseio, I'm the Director of Community Development for the city, and that describes what it's doing there. Just to run you through it, it adds or changes the definition for abandonment slightly, rather than referencing a mortgage property throughout, it references property. Additionally, additionally, it adds a long definition for what constitutes a blighted building, there are three sections to that, and then the third section has definitions of A through K. It then references the property defects, and then, most importantly to this, it talks about when a property needs to be licensed by, so within thirty days of a determination by the code enforcement officer that a property is a blighted building, they'll need to obtain a license. The fee for that license is five thousand dollars every six months. What this is doing is it's filling a gap in our vacant building license. The vacant building license applies only to buildings that are fully vacant, what this is doing is saying that this applies to properties that are blighted. Sometimes these properties don't have the first floor occupied, but they have housing units above occupied, so if you're thinking about specifically the Main Street, there are a few properties on the Main Street that fit this category, it's not a broadly written definition that it applies citywide. If you were to think about the money in particular, the revenue represents thirty thousand dollars in revenue by implementing this. And then additionally, it, it talks about a fee for verifying the security of the dangerous building, so, as we administer these dangerous buildings, the ninety-five of them that we currently have in, in our inventory, every year at the end of the year, we verify their security, and currently that fee is five hundred dollars, so this increases it to seven hundred and fifty dollars. And, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. And, are there any questions or comments from the council on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Now, under old business, and some of these will look very familiar, in order to approve proposed amendment to Chapter two eighty of the Sanford City Ordinance for a revision to twen, uh, two eighty dash eleven dash six urban zone, this item must be read on two separate occasions, this is the second reading.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Yep, all those in favor?
I was gonna have her remind people what it was before we...
Yep, okay. And, don't go away, we've got another one. In order to approve proposed amendment to Chapter two eighty of the Sanford City Ordinance for addition of a new ordinance to eighty dash fifteen dash fourteen affordable housing density bonus, this, it sounds really neat, doesn't it, bonus? This item requires two readings, this is the second reading, it sounds like more than what it really is.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Pete, this is a second?
I'll second approve that.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. In order to approve changes to the city ordinance, Chapter seventy, Airport Article Two Rules and Regulations, this must be read on two separate days, I think they mean occasions, and this is the second reading. May I have a motion? Anne?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, a second, Nate?
Second.
All those in favor? Perfect, thank you, guys. Under new business, in order to approve Amendment Number One to the Land Lease Agreement between the City of Sanford and Northern Maine Community College, and Allison, I believe you're, there you go.
Mm-hmm. So this is good news, if you'll remember, I don't remember if it was last meeting or the meeting before that, but we approved a short-term, non-aeronautical lease for use of the Southwest Ramp for the CDL course, while they had so many people sign up for the course that they wanna offer another subsequent one, so all of this, the only thing that this amendment does is just add to the term, so it takes us till May thirty-first, so it's a little bit of additional revenue, and we get some more workforce development out of it.
Does it allow us to do up a sheet of all the businesses within our boundaries, looking for CDL licenses, and you can just hand it out to all the graduates?
That's Northern Maine Community College's job. Part of their packet. I'm delegating that one.
Or Maury could help out, you know, whatever.
True, volunteer.
Okay. Jonathan?
Thank you. I'm guessing there's no negative impact to the airport operations for extending this?
Nope, we're already set up for it, and FAA has already approved it, we did get FAA sign off on extending it, so all the boxes are checked.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, no, we haven't had a motion yet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and Pete?
Yeah, a second.
All right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
There we go, thank you.
Allison, thanks for spelling my name right, I really appreciate the last name, nailed it.
From the area, she should know how to spell Trenton, Maine.
Okay, in order to approve proposed amendment to eighty dash fifteen dash eleven of the Sanford City Ordinance pursuant to design district overlay zone, this item must be read on two separate readings, this is the first reading. Erin, what is different than the, oh, this is from up here?
That was the public hearing, this is the business, yep.
All right.
So basically, it's us having questions for you.
Sure.
Any questions?
Is there anything you'd wanna see changed before the next meeting, or questions?
Anne?
I just wanted to make a comment and give a shout out to Keith McBride with the Economic Growth Council, because I do believe he was a driving force of bringing this forward based on his interaction with small businesses, particularly in the downtown area, so I just wanted to give that a shout out there.
Excellent. Anything else?
That was a great adjustment.
All right, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
On to the next. In order to adopt municipal resolution to enroll Sanford in the Community Resilience Partnership. Erin, I think, yeah, I should've said, don't go away. She turns a nice shade of pink, doesn't she?
So, as many of you actually attended and are aware, we had a community forum on February first of this year, where we are looking to enroll in the Community Resilience Partnership, it is coming out of the governor's office, and in order to officially enroll, we need to pass a resolution which highlights the three action areas that were prioritized, both via the task force meeting, which happened in January, and then were prioritized further and reduced from a total list of seventy-two to just these three items on the February first meeting. Those are to assess the climate vulnerability of infrastructure, to utilize climate-ready standards, designs, and practices to improve infrastructure, and to improve mobility and reduce vehicle miles traveled. I guess that's it. So these are, these are all basically in the pursuit of implementing the Maine Won't Wait State of Means Four Year Climate Action Plan.
This opens us up to some resources to actually follow through on some of these ideas.
Correct, so the first step is to enroll in the partnership, and once you're an enrolled member, you're allowed to apply for a fifty thousand dollar grant that is available every other year, in order to implement the action areas that have been identified by the public and by, by the task force. So first we say what we're looking to implement, and then we can apply for the grant funding.
John, you and I both attended the meeting where they discussed the various ideas, so...
Yeah, and I think we talked about looking at some drainage or systems, and what was the other item? I don't recall.
Yes, so the first one is to assess climate vulnerability infrastructure, so we are seeing that as looking into our stormwater drainage infiltration issues, and being able to kind of separate those issues out. The next one is to utilize climate-ready standards and designs, which we viewed as prioritizing green infrastructure to manage stormwater, so not just fixing the pipes, but trying to slow down how much water gets into the pipes with some rain gardens and other green infrastructure. And then the third item is to improve mobility and reduce vehicle miles traveled, which we felt aligned with the RACE grant, but we put it as third on the list in order to have it align with the timeline of the RACE grant, in order to potentially pursue some new public transit, transportation elements, like a shelter for, at a transit stop, or some new bike shelters and bike racks in the downtown area, that's what was discussed.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent.
Afraid to leave now. I think I'm done.
I mean, that might be you. In order to accept a bid from Ron Currier's Hilltop Chevrolet for one two thousand twenty-four Silverado fifteen hundred crew cab, four-by-four pickup truck as budgeted in the twenty-three twenty-four capital improvement plan. Jamie, are you excited about this?
I am. So, the city council allotted funds in both the twenty-two twenty-three and the twenty-three twenty-four CIP allotments for this purchase. We're looking to buy an all-wheel-drive vehicle for inspections during inclement weather and also on construction sites. We went out to bid per the purchasing policy, and we received six bids for a light-duty, half-ton pickup truck. Low bidder was Ron Currier Hilltop Chevrolet out of Summersworth, New Hampshire, in the amount of forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. We do have the funds available in the CIP. Once the vehicle is purchased, we plan on selling the two thousand and nine Ford Focus, probably on municipal bid, and that money will go back into the CIP as well.
All right, thank you. And we haven't lost that vehicle because of the process of coming here and doing this?
No, we, we opened the bids about three weeks ago, I informed the car dealer that they were the low bidder, that I had to go through this process. I was actually at the car dealer last week looking for a vehicle with my daughter, and the, and the truck is still there, so, I, I think we have, if you guys approve it tonight, I think we will be able to secure the purchase.
So, Mr. Buck, I thought this was the company we've had issues with?
No, yes. So, Matt Hill, Public Works Director, did reach out to me when he saw the backup. We did purchase, one year we purchased three Public Works vehicles, the issue that happened during that transaction was the, the trucks did not meet our bid specifications, even though on the paperwork they said they would. In Public Works case, they heavily spec out vehicles for specific duties. In my case, in the interest of trying to get the, the best deal possible, my only specs was four-wheel drive, air conditioning, power windows, power locks, and a backup camera. So, pretty much that is a stripped-out version of a car nowadays, so, they, they met those, those bid specs, and, and they gave me the, the build sheet for the truck, the truck is on the lot, and again, I, I went to look at it this weekend when I was there, and it, it does meet those minimal specifications.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion, please? Nate?
Motion to approve.
Second, Bob?
Yep.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
May I share my opposition? And I understand this was approved in the prior CIP, but I just wanna make a statement, and I beat this to the, the death, and I won't say it again, but we have a F-250, I think, at the fire department, that I think is underutilized, and I really would like us as a council and as all of our department heads to continue to think about ways we can impact our budget by using things to their best use, and I, I don't know that's happening with that truck. I feel like this could've been a good opportunity to shift that vehicle to a, a CIP reduction, which we could use to offset other expenses, so, I'm just gonna say that, thank you.
Thank you, Anne, I appreciate that.
I will make note, you made comment of that during previous budget seasons, I did reach out to the, to the department, and they were not able to make that transfer happen.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. An ordinance establish standards for the abatement of blighted buildings as categorized as vacant buildings pursuant to City Code, Chapter one forty-nine, License Update, and definition for abandonment, establishment of fee of security for dangerous buildings, and other administrative amendments to Article six, this item must be read on two separate occasions, this is the first reading. Do you guys have any, we don't do anything with this, but do you have any comments or questions? but do you have any comments or questions about this?
So, yeah, I'm just gonna say that Land Bank looked at this, and when we first got it, it was heavily negative towards property owners. You know, charging fees there were in excess of what you can actually get for rent here in town just to sit on a vacant property. And we understood that there was a need to have something that could hold property owners accountable when their property is deteriorating due to lack of attention. So this was the next stab at it, and we thought it turned out fairly well. If everybody's read through it, it actually gives us some teeth to declare a blighted building in a different way than we do with the residential properties and just say, you know, kind of get moving, you're gonna have to start paying this fee. Don't leave it vacant, don't board up windows, try to get it rented. So it's the idea of it. So, but not to punish people for having vacant space. Because we all know that sometimes you just have a vacant space, and it can last, it can take a while to fill a commercial vacancy. And I think we made that clear. Those of us who are on the committee who have vacant commercial spaces or who have had it in the past during an economic downturn, it can take forever to re-rent. So I think we wanted to make sure that was taken out, that negativity was taken out for those situations. I think we did a pretty good job.
Thank you, Jonathan?
So just to clarify, I'm kind of, I've been kind of reading through this, and it's a little bit broad. But the intention is, is that if people aren't maintaining their property in a rentable state, then it falls under this bucket. But if it's just vacant because they're not able to find a tenant or something...
I think it would be more the, and Ian can answer this, but it's more the, as long as, you know, you want to see in the window that they're making an attempt to lease it and not just...
Okay. I'll let Ian speak, thank you.
Yeah, so I think the first version that Moore is referring to is something that was just a one draft. It was not intended to be any sort of ordinance. It came actually from the last session of the Land Bank, not this one, so it was a carryover. And it intended to bring in some things that economic development wanted, particularly a, just a registry of some kind to be able to maybe have a listing of vacant spaces that people might access as a tenant. And additionally, it was trying to incorporate some aspects of public art. There's been a lot of movement towards putting public art in spaces. And then additionally, making some spaces, the question of what would be tenant-ready. We've been dealing with a number of properties in the downtown, namely, Three Washington Street, the Sanford Trust Building, the former Hoosier Building, or Appliance Pro Building that has a vacant space that's down below. And I don't know the name, it was well before my time here. And then also, the CVS Building across from Hannaford. In that case, you know, the parking lot is almost un-travellable, and a lot of the site features are covered. So the point is not to be broad. The point is to be very targeted. And there were some questions in what was first prepared for this about how broad it would be. And it was actually very narrow. There was questions about whether it would be combined or defined by the design district, or whether it would actually be as narrow as Main Street in the Sanford Downtown. So that's the outcome. It's, it is not a broad reach across the city or a fishing expedition. It is specifically, we know which ones these properties are, and it provides them definitions and some expectations about what changes will be made to bring those out of a blighted building status. So I listed those properties there, and that's the extent of it, or the extent of what's known. And then additionally, you know, it says, "By determination of the code enforcement officer," so that they will receive a notice, and so they could argue with that notice. And then additionally, anything has to be backed up through the code enforcement officer to the city manager's office, and also incorporating the Land Bank. So everybody has to be standing behind the decision to make a ruling that one of these properties is blighted.
Thank you. So this was the first, Anne, do you have a question?
In terms of, I guess my question is, did the Land Bank and the councilors in that discussion feel comfortable with putting the burden of this decision-making on code enforcement as opposed to bringing it forward to the council like we do dangerous buildings? I was just curious if that conversation was brought up.
I'm on Land Bank authority, we're fine with that. We have too many open buildings on Main Street. This is what this was basically about.
Well, I got the impression that a blighted building would come before us in certain circumstances. So maybe I missed something.
No, I was understanding it was gonna be straight-handled by codes and Land Bank, which was fine, either way.
Well, because I'm sitting here going, I'm not sure I would tax CVS on their parking lot, to be honest with you.
We also have an empty restaurant there for how many years? So it's an empty spot that they've done nothing with. So this would cover this.
Well, I would, I could argue that the space that they were in is in pretty poor condition anyway, so someone probably has to put a lot of money in to reoccupy, so...
I would like to give that some thought, Anne, with respect to whether the license would be approved by the city council, or whether it would be administrative. And at this point, it's intended to function the same way as the vacant building license. It's by a determination of the code enforcement officer. That's the way, that's the way it's written. But you can, just like other license categories, put that before the city council, too.
It is a $5,000 fee, too, guys, for six months. That's a huge fee to allow them to make from the code enforcement.
Well, and not even to allow, but more to put that pressure on them to decide. It is more, and I don't know if, I hate to put Jamie on the spot, maybe that could be a discussion that subcommittee is input from our codes office on their comfort level with that, or if they would prefer council participation.
We could discuss that at Land Bank.
Right, so also, as someone on Land Bank, I kind of thought there was gonna be a city council component to it, but perhaps there's a middle ground here where maybe our codes enforcement officers can make the determination, but there's an appeal period to the city council. And that way, if that person feels that they're aggrieved by the decision of our code office, they can come before the city council. And that way, it's sort of on their, it's their burden essentially to say why they're not a blighted building. I mean, it's something to discuss.
And that would make, to me, that would make everything go faster. So I would have to agree that I think that they would have the opportunity to come to us after if they realized that what they wanted to challenge it.
Would you use the city council to challenge it, or the ZBA?
You would in a license. You would in a license.
Jonathan?
Thank you. So I think what I'd like to see is an evaluation by codes that might fall under this bucket, and then have it come to the council. And then, as we work through a few of these, maybe we'll get a better feel for what makes sense. Instead of slapping a fairly hefty fee on an owner that may already be struggling to do some repairs or get something rented, I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to help them before we start slapping them with fines, basically. So that's what I'd like to see. Maybe this needs to go back to subcommittee for some more discussion.
It would anyway, because it's first...
Okay.
That's why we discuss it like this.
Well, that's just my two cents on that, thank you.
No, thank you, John.
Anne?
And one other question related to the first paragraph where we've subbed in downtown for city, and I think, Ian, you were touching upon a specific area. And I just want to remind us that there are many folks in our community that feel like we have two downtowns, one in Springvale, one in Sanford. So I don't know if we want to be, create clarity. And there are potentially blighted buildings in either downtown. So I don't know, you know, how specific or unspecific we want to be in regards to where these properties are located. Maybe, was the intent it was on Main Street only, did I hear that?
The original intention was to ask the question of whether, you know, so the question was, if you let the blighted definition too broad, you'd capture too much, right? So it's really threading a needle between some of these properties that are perpetually vacant. I'll cite specifically the Sanford Trust Building that's vacant, or the former Appliance Pro Building, which the first floor is vacant and uninhabitable. And so trying to define that without being too broad and saying, maybe it's just this small area. So it's really a question.
I would wonder if we might apply our Sanford Downtown District Overlay and our Springvale District Overlay as a option to this blighted building piece. It's real specific areas, just a thought.
All right, so we'll bring that back.
It'll be at Land Bank. It'll be at Land Bank next Thursday. No, Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
At 8:45.
They've never been on Thursday, dear.
No, I just spend Thursdays with you, I know.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, any comments from councilors? Anyone with a comment? Anne, you're shaking your head, yes?
Well, I wanted to thank Steve and Ronnie and whoever added their efforts, probably Larissa, to tonight's municipal presentation of the budget. I thought it went really well, and I appreciate the time that went into it. I think it's important for folks, if anybody's still watching, it's important for folks to understand that unlike the school committee, who's been working on their budget for a month and a half now, I think, as a committee, we have only met once in a workshop setting to go over our initial budget. And we haven't actually really begun our work in terms of digging in, so to speak, to our budget. So I think for folks watching at home, it's important to understand that we're still in that process, and there's a lot of work to be done on our end as well. So I wanted to share that, and I think that's it.
All right, thank you, anyone else? Jonathan?
I think it might actually go under future agenda, so I'll wait, thank you.
Okay. Nate?
Two quick things. First, I believe I saw on the news that our own Sergeant Colleen Adams was nominated as...
We're gonna be doing an award present, not to stop you, but we are gonna do something the next meeting because Craig couldn't be here now.
Okay. So I'll just leave that as a suspense, then. Everyone can check, tune in the next meeting and figure it out. And just another thing, we have a new youth literacy program that's been recently launched as of today. The Sanford Mayors adopted a literacy program, and they have a new program called Boomers Bookworms. It's still, there's more information that's going to be announced, but it's geared towards our kindergarten through eighth-grade youth. It's meant to engage youth in education, reading, but also with our community as well. So if you want more information, you can stop by the Sanford Mayors office, or the Springvale Library, or Zippy's Copy Center.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? How about agenda items? Any items that you guys... Jonathan?
So I'm not sure exactly where this would fall, but I did want to bring up, or just ask, and maybe Nate can help with that. Is there a process to request the sewer district to accept online payments? I know that's a little random, but we've been accepting it online for water for a long time, and that's the only check that I have to run every few months.
I will say, I think there's, that's in works. There's been a shift in our, as a sewer district, and just for the public to know, I'm also a member of the Sanford Sewerage District. It's why the question came to me. There is a new payment accounting software that has been adopted. They've been working out some kinks, but they're making it work, and I think that's going to be an option. But certainly, feel free to check in with Andre Brousseau and other members of the district at their meetings and get some more information. But I think that's coming.
Way to be on top of that, Jonathan, yes. Okay, so that doesn't need to be on the agenda, but it was, it was good.